I don't think, I don't think he's. Yeah, he's not on the agenda tonight.
No kids, no kids. Two small dogs, so. We've been married like twenty-two years. We keep trying, but no kids.
We all set, Devin?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll call this meeting to order the Durham Board of Selectmen on July twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi, Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, any amendments to the agenda?
I do have some comments in the manager's report that I will keep brief.
Okay, all right. So, no amendments, so at this, I'll open the floor for public comment. If you have a public comment, then come up to the chair at the table here and state your name and where you live and whatever your comment is.
Anybody else going, Bobby? I don't know what was happening first. I'm Heather Roy. I live at seven-seven-seven Hollowell Road. And I had a few things, well, I mean, you know, I always come with questions and can't answer them and that's okay, but I'm still gonna ask them. So, um, one, I'm wondering about a town manager hiring update. We haven't really heard anything, so I'm hoping that maybe we could hear something about that. Also, I know that there were talks of, between the Planning Board, the Conservation Commission, and I believe the Select Board about having a joint workshop between those boards to, like, get everybody on the same page about how we're approaching policy. And I'm just wondering if that is on anybody's radar, if that's been scheduled, if anything.
It hasn't been scheduled, but I know that George and the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission have met, and I think they're kind of getting their ducks in a row first, you know, before they come with some sort of a proposal to the Select Board.
Okay.
John, would you concur with that?
I do. Yeah, that's a good way to describe it.
All right.
Um, and then... So, I know that we're gonna talk tonight, or you guys are looking at the warrant articles about the ARPA funds, and I know that we don't have the opportunity after public comment to talk about any of that stuff. So, again, it's, it's a strange thing to preempt before the conversation happens, but that's the way the process is, so that's what I'm gonna do.
I will say, so, we do plan on opening to Budget Committee members for discussion when we talk about that.
Okay.
So, if you have, like, specific questions, you know, that might be the better place, or you can do it.
Okay, so I'll just bring one thing up now then, and then I'll save my specific questions for that time. Thank you, I appreciate that. Opening in August, there is a specific grant available for, it's fifteen million dollars has been earmarked for the upgrade of Havac, lighting, heating, cooling, like, that, the whole thing. And right now, they're doing retrofits for school. That application's been open since June. A hundred percent grant. It's not a thing like with the stream crossings where the town has to put up half and then the rest of it come, it's, it's completely funded. And so, having this conversation, you know, five days before the application opens, I just would like for the board to consider that perhaps, you know, I know that, like, time is of the essence and that these things need to happen, but we're literally five days away from a grant opportunity that would cover the cost of everything that we're trying to do up to fifty thousand square feet. So, in case that wasn't on anybody's radar, I just would really like for that part to be considered when we're looking at how we're gonna pay for this. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
I, I can respond somewhat to the town manager update. I know that the, the committee presented a finalist, and the board has met with that finalist, and we have an executive session in our meeting, at the end of our meeting tonight, which, how do I phrase this, is moving the process along.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, so if that will close public comment, we'll move on to reports. Fire chief, do you have a report this evening?
First, hopefully you've got the agenda, I set that up. Our call volume is steady with last year. Last year was up fifteen percent, and we're looking right on pace with the same numbers so far as last year. The boys just did a motor vehicle accident, no injuries, so they're up to two hundred and sixty-five responses. Last year was five oh five at the end of the year. We're a little bit more than halfway through, so two sixty-five, right on pace. Our engine twenty-two, that's our newest, the two thousand and nineteen Pierce, that was, that just came back from insurance repair. I think we had a motor vehicle accident in November, December last year. Took that long to get parts. Believe it or not, the proprietary from Pierce, I sent it to Allegiance, which is over in Auburn. They're a Pierce dealer. We're on the hook for a thousand deductible. Everything else is covered through our insurance. I will eat the thousand through my budget. I slid in there a couple of other things and some warranty work that needed to be done, but that's back in service. Our training has increased. If you saw Twitter or Facebook, we sent a tanker Sunday to Lisbon. That was last minute, but specialized training from an instructor about tanker tender shuttles and how to do it. We were invited, so I sent just a crew of two with diesel costs and, and training, but we, we sent two, two members over there, which is nice. Thursday night, we'll have extrication training, so a real car, we'll tear it into a thousand pieces, it's important. We're running about fifty, fifty-five motor vehicle accidents, two or three extrications every year, you know, with the Jaws of Life and dash roll up, so it's important to get the new members really time on the, on the Jaws. We have two sets, one on each engine.
Oh, we have two sets?
We do have two sets. Engine twenty-one, the older rig, that's a two thousand and four, that's our primary with, with rams and airbags and whatnot. The, the newer Pierce is our backup, but we do have the two sets, just in case. We received several grants that we put in place. Drip drop, that's really an electrolyte powder that you can pour in your water during these hot months. It's just powder, almost like a Gatorade, but different. They sent us two cases, so everyone's been using that during this hot weather. And just the other day, Anheuser-Busch gave us a seven, eight-foot multiple, I think we got, you know, three thousand cans of water. So, it does say Anheuser-Busch, it is cans of water.
Just water?
Just water. I checked. I had several, just water, but in these hot months, prehab, rehab, if, if we did the cooling center, which we did have several messages that people were looking for a cooling center, we did not opt to open one. I know we talked about the Eureka Center or, or the fire station, but they did find other cooling venues with family or friends during this hot period. I don't have specific numbers, I can't tell you, you know, we're not really staffed sometimes on the weekend, I check messages, but everyone was accounted for and they did find other cooling venues in town. I told you, we, we did respond last month to Brunswick's fire, that we were there for four and a half hours, and we responded recently to Freeport's commercial restaurant fire. So, that was six of us directly to the scene. It was a three-alarm fire, that was about three or four hours for us. I put down, I'm covering Powell this week as the fire chief for ten days. That's no pay, that's just sort of neighbor helping neighbor. Chief Peters asked me, hey, I'm on vacation, can you listen, respond, just in case? I've responded to a few medicals. They do have a deputy over there, but they're down to like six members.
What?
So, yes, so according to the chief, that really six active sort of members in Powell.
Wow.
They do contract with Freeport Ambulants, so that helps them, they're not staffing in ambulants. They did just get a new member, but that's the sign of the times.
Yeah.
Not for us, but for us. You know, we've taken on new members, but that pool is shallow, as you know, so we're doing okay. I know Milt behind me just responded, I think we had six members to a motor vehicle accident, three apparatus, an ambulance, an engine, and the forestry, so that's just commonplace for us. I can't say enough about them. The state has finally come out with free tuition for EMT, that's over a thousand dollars. I put a calling out if any one of our members wanted to upgrade to an EMT basic. That'll be free through the state. I did attend a fire chief's meeting. I normally don't attend a lot of them, but it was in Hope, and they were offering a lobster or lunch.
However, every man has his price.
That's a true story. I did, we did pay. There was actually training on, on the forest warden, was there, the chief forest warden, and talking about the three different sites that we use for, for burn permits and, and how to regulate it, what's better, what's, what's sort of the standard. We keep using the Warden's Report, and that, we've, we've shut off the state side of things in Durham. That's what we want everyone to use, is the Warden's Report. It's free, you can't get on until nine because you can't burn starting at nine, but you can go to the night on those days, so that's a little education. All trucks have now been scheduled for pump certification, they'll, they'll do their pump. That's also through a vendor we use locally, and they certify it for ISO rating for insurance purposes. Third-party vendors checks the pump, drafts, the whole nine yards. That's important. As your health agent, COVID-nineteen in town, I, I don't have specific numbers because they're difficult to come by, but there is an uptake in town, and, and I see that by who we transport, and we've transported several COVID-positive people. We get those reports, so when they test positive at the hospital, we get a report that you've been either exposed or transported COVID-positive. Along with that, monkeypox, not being funny, there's thirty-eight hundred cases in the U.S., one in Maine. It is spread by close contact, you have to come in very close contact with the individual. It's not through coughing, different from COVID, sort of like measles mumps, sort of like bodily contact. One in Maine, but it is starting to be a pandemic across the world, and we're watching it in Maine, yeah, not in this county. But some people are concerned because they keep talking about it, and it has a funny name, but, yeah, and the government might try to ramp it up, but we're doing okay in Maine. Maine was one of the last holdouts, there was only four states without monkeypox, and we just came down with a case. There was a, for that, Anheuser-Busch, there was some social media that went out, I'm sure you saw it, but we do appreciate them, and even the delivery was free by local vendors, so it was important. And that's all I have for you tonight. I will be sticking around just in case ARPA funds, I know we're on the hook for maybe some heating and cooling for the fire station, so I will be here to answer questions from the public or you all.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Calvin, sir.
What'd you do to my truck? I see stuff hanging off.
Yeah, yeah.
The crew have been out ditching Auburn-Powell Road still, will be there most, probably all summer. We've got, within a couple of weeks, we should be to the Auburn Town Line, then we're gonna switch to the other side and head to the Powell Town Line. With the recent thunderstorm activity, we've been up repairing a lot of washout roads, ditches, shoulders that let go, so we've been chasing those. We've been up painting more intersection stop bars, stop aheads, parking lots. We've been out cutting trees and branches at the intersections so people can see and the, around the signs, the branches tend to grow in over the curved signs, the speed signs, and so we've been cutting those and cutting the intersections so people can see a lot better. We, we did finish the roadside mowing for the two thousand and twenty-two, rented the machine and then Powell took it, and so we kind of worked together on that. We, our crocker is, still hasn't given us a date for paving yet, they're way behind, and I'm not pushing them too hard right now because fuel prices are dropping and liquid asphalt prices are dropping, so I'm gonna try to push that out, or not gonna chase them, that's for sure, until hopefully things will get cheaper, so. Called three insulation companies, I think Mitch has two of the quotes, I think two came in out of the three, so I would anticipate the third one coming in, so. Fuel prices are continuing to drop, that's good news for our budget, that should help us out at the end of the year to meet that bottom line. And I've been working extensively with the Federal Highway Administration on the National Clearinghouse, which has started a couple of years ago, and it's quite a process where apparently we were not in compliance completely, and once I got the folder from, from here and took it from here, that apparently over the last couple of administrations, there were some things that fell through the cracks, and I've had to straighten out and get, so we're all up and in full compliance and the, so it's, it's, the clearinghouse is a national, you know, before, if you hired a commercial truck driver, you didn't know anything other than what was on the state license report. Now, it's, if they had a violation, a drug violation or something in Tennessee, or they could be working for multiple employees at the same time, a towing company on the weekend, it all has to go into a clearinghouse. Any, any positive reports have to go into a national clearinghouse, and so that's really just ramping up, and a lot of people are getting on board with getting up to speed, and they're starting to audit that stuff, so we're up to speed and out front on it, and so that's been quite a, quite a process to get through all that. And that's, that's all I've got.
Anybody have questions for Calvin?
Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
I'm gonna stick around in case you have any questions on the heating.
Yes, please, thank you. All right. Mr. Town Manager.
I have five items for the public. Reminder to taxpayers, the town of Durham is now collecting property taxes as billed earlier this month. We encourage all taxpayers to come in and pay their taxes to avoid interest charges, which will be charged as of August sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. Additional revenues, the town received eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars from the state for homestead reimbursements. In addition, we also received an allotment of revenue sharing one and two for a total of eighty-three thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eight cents. Tan documentation is being reviewed by legal. You are being asked to act upon a formal document tonight that authorizes a tan for this year. Our legal team is reviewing this to make sure that a final determination, so that we may submit the completed documents and initiate a bank paperwork with Andrew Skoggan Bank as we may need, and I keep emphasizing that, as we may need. Orientation for new Select Board members, as a reminder to the new members as well as existing members, please consider going online or actually attending the MMA review of the role and responsibilities of elected officials per the statutes. In addition, I am suggesting that the board have a separate workshop that allows the town manager and the board to review the relevant statutes. As summer is slower time, I suggest sometime this same month for a workshop. And just on a lighter side of things, as the chief was talking about his training and such, the word that I got that he was going to be having to attend an affair where they were practicing extrication of confined spaces, I didn't realize it was a lobster.
The Jaws of Life, that's what you got.
Respectfully submitted.
All right, thank you. I would just, one editorial comment to the training for Select Board members, it's actually, what he mentioned is a good, is definitely a good thing to do, and I found it very helpful when I did it, but the FOA training is required by law, that they, and you can do that online, it's as simple as, basically, you have to read through the frequently asked questions document and, and then, you know, promise that you actually read it, and it prints out a certificate, and you give it to the town clerk and keep it on record. That's actually true for you as well, John, if you haven't already, and Budget Committee members as well. You don't have to do it every year, but you have to do it every time you reelect it.
And this would be something that I would be handing out to, to all the elected officials as well.
Yep.
There's a workshop coming up.
Yeah, you can do the workshop, too, yeah.
Let us know in advance, we will make registration.
Yeah, yeah, the town pays the registration fees for any of those MMA trainings, so.
Okay, so that's it for town manager's report. Is there any questions from Mitch?
I am going to ask the board if there's an objection to moving the first new business item under number seven up to this point in the agenda. We have Adam from the Royal River Conservation Trust here, and I, I don't really think we need to make him sit through our discussions on HVAC quotes and the special town meeting, and so is there any objection to that? No? Okay, Adam, why don't you come on up and, and we can go through the New Leaf Farm question.
Thanks, Kevin. I am Adam Prayer from New Gloucester, Maine, on behalf, I'm here on behalf of Royal River Conservation Trust and Maine Farmland Trust to talk about the New Leaf Farm Conservation Project, although I feel a little silly being here because most of you probably know New Leaf Farm and Dave and Chris Colson better than I do. But I'm here today because Royal River Conservation Trust and Maine Farmland Trust are working with Dave and Chris Colson to purchase an agricultural conservation easement from them. And it, for those who are not familiar with conservation easements, essentially, it is preventing development in perpetuity, and it's promoting certain values, because this is an agricultural conservation easement, it's promoting agricultural values. And in addition to an agro, agricultural conservation easement, which we, we will be placing on the property, we also will, our Maine Farmland Trust will be holding an option to purchase at agricultural value. And so what that really means is that a conservation easement restricts development, but some people purchase land where there's a conservation easement on that property, and they'll just not farm the land, they'll just have their house there and let the fields grow, and they'll mow them every once in a while. But there's an option to purchase at agricultural value that Maine Farmland Trust will hold on this property because for the past thirty years, Dave and Chris Colson have farmed the land commercially. They stopped in two thousand and fourteen, and they, I was looking at the figures and I don't know off the top of my head how many tons of food that they actually sold, but they, they grew a lot of vegetables, mostly tomato plants, mostly mescaline mix, and they have really cared for that land. Dave Colson has been an integral member of MOFC, the Maine Organic Farmers Association, and so he and Chris have really, really taken care of that land, and it's really important to them that the next people who own that land commercially farm it and bring food to the local communities of Durham and elsewhere.
On that point, I think, because I got a little bit confused there when you talked about how sometimes people would buy it and not actually farm it, are you saying that this easement or this program would essentially require that it be sold to somebody who would then be required to farm it, they wouldn't be able to just keep it as their large house lot?
Yeah, so, so that's the idea. Maine Farmland Trust doesn't always have an option to purchase the agricultural value because this property has been so successful commercially, and it's very important to the Colsons that it goes to a farmer. They have that contingency in there to help facilitate that and step in if, for whatever reason, Maine Farmland Trust and Royal River Conservation Trust thought that it wouldn't be going to being commercially farmed. And so, in terms of their time window, and I should have said this at the beginning, conservation easement, the landowner retains their property, the conservation easement is just pulling out a property, right, which is development, and it's putting some restrictions as to where, you know, small structures could go, such as a shed and that sort of thing into a farmstead area. But the conservation easement is held by a landowner, it isn't selling the land. But like I said, it's in perpetuity, so it does pass along with the land. So, when Dave and Chris Colson, their plan is maybe in the next five to eight years to have the next farmers take over. If they sell the land to those farmers, that conservation easement is always there to make sure that it stays as conservation land and it stays as farmland.
What's the impact to, like, property taxes collected on that land?
Yeah, that's a good question. So, property taxes, it does impact property taxes. Dave and Chris Colson are paying their property taxes now, I don't know what that figure is, but the assessor must take into consideration that there's a conservation easement on the property. That still means that they're paying taxes, but, and I'm not exactly how your assessor functions, but when they're looking at the value of the property, it's going to be less because no development can occur over a large, large portion of that property.
That would impact just the land, though, right, not the buildings?
Correct, yes, yes.
So, the rest of the board knows, the last year's tax bill, not the one, so the twenty-one tax bill on that piece of property was eight thousand, two hundred dollars, but over three quarters of the valuation is in buildings, less than a hundred thousand of the valuation, or ninety-one thousand, nine hundred is land valuation, so seems like it would be a pretty minor potential impact to any tax revenue.
Yeah, and I should have started off in the very beginning as to why I'm even here, because this is a private land transaction between a land trust or land trusts and the Colsons. But I'm here because, like I said, we're purchasing the conservation easement from them, which basically means that we're purchasing the development value, so we get an appraisal and the difference between the, when the development value gets taken off the table, that's the value that we then pay for the conservation easement. And so, fifty percent of the funds we already have through Maine Farmland Trust, and the other fifty percent of funds are coming, or we hope to come, through Land for Maine's Future. They have forty million, and their projects benefit habitat, recreation, open space. In this round of proposals, it's for working farms and forests. And so, the LMF application really prioritizes projects that demonstrate municipal support, and I thought, what better way to have municipal support than the Select Board saying that this project aligns with town goals and policies? I think I may have included them in the Select Board packet, or maybe I didn't, but I know just, just scanning through some of the, the comp plans and other documents the town has, that back in two thousand and eighteen, ninety percent of residents supported commercial farming. I know you, the aquifers also in Durham are pretty important to y'all in terms of drinking water and thinking about the future. And the land use ordinance, which was adopted in two thousand and twenty-one, states that the town wishes to encourage conservation of land as open space or for recreational use over sand and gravel aquifers as highly compatible with the preservation of groundwater quality and quantity. And that's just, that's just, you know, the municipal goals and policies zooming out a little bit. The project, of course, is down by Davis Road and Chelsea Hill Road, Chesley Hill Road, and abutting, this project is three hundred and forty acres of existing conserved land around Runaround Pond. We hope in the next year or two to add another seventy or eighty acres of stream frontage that we'll be protecting, so we've almost, we almost have four hundred and twenty acres, and we'll be adding another seventy-five if we can complete this New Leaf Farm project. So, we have a really nice stronghold of conservation land in Durham around Runaround Pond, and we hope to do more and work with the town, but we think that's a pretty good start. And regionally, that's significant when, as a land trust, when we're just thinking about habitat and recreation, Durham is really fortunate that, you know, if we look at Greater Portland, twenty towns in Greater Portland, of course, are closer to Lewiston and Auburn, but if you look at Greater Portland, where the, where there's the concentration of the largest blocks of habitat remaining, it's in the area of Durham around Runaround Pond. And so, there's been a lot of great conservation work there, and so, so we're excited for that, and we know Durham will continue facing development pressure. In the past few years, the Colsons have had a few unsolicited offers for their property, and also their woods, which take up about forty-four acres, would be suitable for gravel most likely, and they would like to protect it from that. And, and the fields are about twenty-four or so acres, and, and those are some of the site specifics, I probably glossed over a couple, a couple of different elements, but the Maine Farmland Trust will be going to Land for Maine's Future Board on September twenty-seventh. But the Maine Farmland Trust will be going to Land for Maine's Future Board on September twenty-seventh, I believe it is, and that's when they'll be making their presentation to them and asking for funding. The appraised value of the, of the development value of the, of the conservation easement, they haven't completed that appraisal, but they've gotten some preliminary suggestions and they think it could be anywhere from two hundred to four hundred thousand, I believe. So Maine Farmland Trust would be paying half of that value somewhere between a hundred and two hundred thousand. We would be asking Land for Maine's Future for somewhere between a hundred and two hundred thousand. So conservation work is really expensive to do right now in the real estate market. And the Land for Maine's Future is setting us up to help leverage some state resources to do local conservation. So we're pretty excited about that and I welcome any questions.
What are some of the benefits to the town? I mean, you talked about how they meet some of the things we, this is a vast, what are the things that, you know, someone's gonna be able to go and see firsthand?
Yeah, well, when you talk about, you know, the rural character, the open space of a town, driving by the road, you know, what's visible is the twenty-four or so acres of field and also their orchard. So all of that will remain as is into the future. It also, like I was saying, protects the aquifer underneath, which in Durham is pretty important because of the, I think you only have fifteen hundred or so acres of sand and gravel aquifer underneath the land. And then additionally, I think having local businesses in your town is really important. And there's a lot of local farmers that are moving to Maine right now and looking for places to farm. And Chris and Dave Colson's farm is the perfect farm and they've really steward it so well. And it would be such a shame to see that as a couple houses or to have someone on that land and not farming that land. And so they'd be contributing to the local economy, they'd be contributing to Durham. They've had sixty or so farm apprentices in the thirty or so years that they did have the farm. I don't know how many of those people were, were, you know, students and young folks from Durham. I imagine some of them were and some of those people have gone on to start other farms. I don't know if those farms are in Durham. And other people have gone on to, you know, do research in agriculture. So they've really given back to the community and I think that foundation that they have set up will really provide a sound starting block for a young farmer, farmers. And it's really tough to be a young farmer these days, so, yeah.
And I guess I would add to that, you know, I'll be right, I'm strongly in favor of this for, for a number of reasons. One, I think it's, it's right in the sweet spot of what our comprehensive plan says about preserving rural character and supporting agriculture and protecting the aquifer and so on. There is a minor, if any, tax hit and I think you can argue that in the long run, it's a net tax plus because you, you said, what will residents see? I think it's more like what they won't see. They won't see a big housing development there that puts more pressure on the schools, you know, and all those things. I mean, there's, I mean, I'm not anti-development by any means, but, but when we have an existing farm and a chance to preserve it as a farm, a working farm, I, I think that's a great opportunity for the town and I think we should support it.
Yeah, and it's, it's in the aquifer protection zone and also earlier I was talking about kind of how we have already three hundred and forty acres of conserved land around Runaround Pond. And so there's many ways to do conservation, but so far we've found it very beneficial to have our conservation land next to each other and build from, from there as opposed to having it scattered all over town. So then when people are going to paddle and visit Runaround Pond or go for a walk, there's a lot more future possibilities and, and current recreational uses.
That was gonna be my next question, but thank you.
Yeah, yeah. And I, and I should clarify too that some conservation easements allow public access. This conservation easement will very likely not include public access because the idea is that it will continue to be commercially farmed.
Are there any conservation or, or yet agricultural prohibitions that go along with this?
Such as, such as say?
When I say agriculture, I'm trying to do the umbrella. Was anything pulled out saying though, you can't grow certain things at that location?
I don't believe so. The conservation easement, the actual legal document is still being drafted. I don't suspect that it will say that, although most agricultural conservation easements, and I can't say this for certainly that this easement will have it, but most require a, you know, a farm management plan or some sort of thing, which oftentimes has to be approved by the holder of the conservation easement, who will be Royal River Conservation Trust, even though Maine Farmland Trust is using funds to protect the property. But since we're the local land trust and we have a conservation easement at Old Crow Ranch, we're in the neighborhood, so, yeah.
There's something specific you're worried about, like you don't want to grow broccoli or something like that?
I hate broccoli. But sometimes there's the tag along prohibition that down the road no one thought of and wish we had known that upfront, just to make sure that it, it still allows for commercial endeavor to be viable.
Yeah, I would say that Maine Farmland Trust is gonna be drafting the conservation easement and they are a statewide land trust and experts in the entire country at doing this. So I feel pretty confident that they'll, that they'll think through those, those issues, yeah.
Is this Franahan Fen? Have anything, does a Franahan Fen have anything to do with you guys?
It does. So it's an active project. We're working with a landowner who recently purchased that property from the Ingersons, who used to, to own that parcel. And so, and the next year or two or three, either there'll be a conservation easement on that land or we'll be, Royal River Conservation Trust would acquire that land. And I think I said earlier, but that has about three quarters of a mile of stream frontage on Runaround. So the public access and all those things will be continued. It has no relation to the Colsons. I just had an excuse to put it on the map to show that we're working hard.
I didn't see anything in the paperwork.
Yeah, yeah, good question.
Is Old Crow Ranch a similar program that we're talking about for New Leaf Farm or is that a different program?
So, so Old Crow Ranch, I can't recall if it was funded by Land for Maine's Future money, but it is a conservation easement. So many of the same components of the New Leaf Farm applied to Old Crow Ranch, such as it can't be subdivided, it's not gonna be developed, those sorts of things.
I think, I don't know, it's tough to imagine anybody just not seeing Old Crow Ranch as a pretty positive thing in town, so. Yeah, okay. Any other questions? All right, has everybody had a chance to read the proposed template letter that they sent? It's pretty straightforward, so. I would entertain a motion to, for the board to approve and sign a copy of this letter on Town Letterhead and forward it to the appropriate recipient.
I'd second that. Oh, I'll make the motion.
You made the motion, okay, is there a second?
A second.
Todd seconds, any discussion?
The only complaint I have about this whole thing is that there is not a, a member of the board from, on the Royal River Conservation Trust from Durham and you have all this property here. That's the only thing I would point out, just.
No, I, that is very fair.
Are you volunteering?
No, no, but it was, it was, it was something I, I noticed in, in a couple times reading the letter and looking at the website, so.
Yeah, not to sidetrack too many things, we would love to have a Durham board member on our board and we would love to continue doing more conservation in Durham. And the limitation is always finding private landowners to work with because we don't have a board member living in Durham right now.
Do you have a card?
I do have a card, yeah, it's in my car, if I can grab it for you.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor, we're in the discussion phase, any further discussion? All, all in favor? Five zero, okay, so we will, we'll get this typed up on Town Letterhead and forwarded appropriately. So thank you for your efforts in the town and good luck on closing this deal.
Yeah, we're very appreciative, thank you.
All right, so we're gonna get back to old business and so we have, the first one is HVAC quotes. We, we reviewed some quotes last week and we kind of asked for maybe another click down in the level of information we were getting, so what's, I think we have an updated sheet in front of us, right?
I hope you do and I hope that it brings you closer to an understanding of what Calvin and I have been doing. Notes, absent of engaging a mechanical engineer, we contacted three vendors who indicated they either relied upon their suppliers to meet the volume and HVAC requirements or did the calculations themselves. We asked for replacement generally in kind, meaning no upgrade to new technology, rather replace with similar systems. If a vendor suggested a new technology, such as heat pumps, then we would still use their pricing for what we requested and provide no allowance for the differing technology. So with that in mind, I'd like to go through the locations and what we're talking about and then try to answer your questions. For the town hall, we had three vendors. ABG was putting in two York gas furnaces, each capable of sixty K. They're ducted and they also have AC condensers. There'll be furnaces that are five years parts and labor, five years P and L, parts and labors in both buildings. And they came in at fifty-five thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars. Agility, two York AC units, two furnace replacement York units at sixty K each up above, one eighteen gallon electric hot water heater, we're reducing our expenditure right off the bat with that. Warranties, all five years parts and labor with two years annual maintenance right off the bat, included in their bid of forty-four thousand four hundred and nineteen dollars. Patriot came in at two carrier units of forty K each, forty K BTU each, two York AC units and a fifty gallon hot water heat pump. They came in at forty-three, three seventeen. Moving over to the fire department, we had from ABG, two horsepower pumped units at nine K and twenty-four K and it's not ducted. Their warranties are running heat pumps for five years parts and labor. Under agility, they're two York, I'm sorry, they're two Samsung twenty-four K units, one ducted into the office area. And agility's like ABG was included in their grand total to the far left. Patriot came in with a heat pump, Samsung units, two of them, twenty-four K for the conference room and eighteen K above the offices, duct work in the offices only, sorry for the spelling. What's interesting is Patriot came in a warranty of one year parts and labor plus manufactures five year parts, ten years on the heat exchanger. Samsung, ten years compressor and five years parts on that. In looking at what we are getting for the dollar amounts, it is both our recommendations that agility be given the bid and it's primarily because the warranties are five years parts of labor with two years annual maintenance added on top, all one price of forty-four, four nineteen. If you go into annual maintenance for the next two years on any of the others, the lowest bidder probably would far exceed that forty-four, forty-three thousand three hundred and seventeen in cost. So it makes sense for agility and we think that ABG is a little on the high side. So our recommendation is agility for both of the fire department and town hall. I hope this clarifies the issues separately. And to his credit, we've gotten two out of three responses thus far for insulation in this building up above and we'd be incorporating whatever the final price is into the warrant article for this as well. In all cases, we're attempting to reduce energy consumption and therefore reduce future costs at the town meeting for operating these buildings.
In the case of the town office anyway, it's not just about reducing energy costs. It's about, we don't have heating units that are gonna sufficiently heat the building this winter if we don't replace it.
And if we hit another ninety-five and hundred degree day, we don't have cooling units.
We're almost through those.
Yes, so I'm hoping again that this helps clarify and if it doesn't, shoot me.
Insulation, so you, in the, in the amounts that are currently in the draft warrant, is insulation included in these amounts?
No, I would, in the draft warrant, hold on, I have to check. I thought that I had included that, if not, then that will be included in. My initial thinking was that we were somewhere in the ten to fifteen thousand dollar range for the additional insulation and this came in at a very competitive price.
Well, because if we're going to, trying to think, do we have to, yeah, we have to approve the warrant articles tonight. So we need, we need to approve an actual amount tonight, so.
All right, while you're going through.
Yeah, we can get to that when we get to the next item on the agenda. Any questions or comments specifically to the HVAC quotes?
No, I think it did a good job.
Yeah.
I think it sounds ducted into the offices at the fire station, it sounds like a great idea.
In my mind, I'm thinking, I don't know. We can go ahead and vote to accept the agility bid. We don't really have to say subject to approval at town meeting because I think on, on this work, not, maybe not necessarily the fire department, but for this building, if we don't, for some reason, don't get that ARPA approval to use ARPA funds for it, then we're just gonna have to take capital funds and do it because it needs to be done. So I guess we, we could go ahead and.
May I make a recommendation?
Yeah, please.
And I apologize, I, I want to be able to be specific, but I can't be. If you are in fact proposing agility at forty-four, four, one, nineteen, that's okay. But as part of your motion and an additional five thousand dollars, but not to exceed the five thousand for the insulation, so it brings it up to forty-nine, four, nineteen. And whatever is not spent goes back to the original.
Well, we would do that in the warrant article.
Yes, but I just want you to be aware that that becomes an idea and I will try to get that squared away.
Is insulation only a town office thing?
That is correct.
So that, and you're thinking five thousand is safe there?
In case we have to do any other repairs up above that we're not aware of structure.
So perhaps when we get there, Article Four, maybe we make that fifty-five thousand three hundred instead of fifty thousand three hundred.
Yeah, because we may have to lift the.
There's a lot of unknowns.
Yep, okay. Well then, I would entertain a motion to accept the agility bid and authorize the town manager to act on that bid once the funding source has been identified.
So moved.
Is there a second on that?
I'll go second.
Joe second, any discussion?
Mitch, just out of curiosity, on the insulation going in the attic, is that just a blown in silos? Is it a, what do we got going on there?
That's exactly what we're talking about.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
So we know the, the who, we just don't know how we're paying for it.
Right.
All right, so I'm gonna move on to the second one under six. And so this is to affirm the special town meeting and draft warrant articles. And so I think, I think everybody has a copy of that and I think I had sent them to you ahead of time, but without amounts. Because I didn't, I didn't have that information yet. So pretty simple, you know, the two, choose a moderator, moderator's manual rule of procedure. And then the four questions. The first one is asking for seventeen thousand five hundred and fifty of ARPA funds. And I should back up a second just to set some context for people here. The town has received, is it four twenty-seven or a little over four hundred and?
Four hundred and twenty-one thousand.
Four twenty-one, okay, four hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. And there are certain things we can do with it and certain things we can't do with it. Like, for instance, we can't, we can't pay down our debt with it, for instance. Or we can't just refund it to taxpayers as a tax rebate, you know, there's, you know, there's. So, anyway, there's certain things you can do, there's certain things you can't. It's, it's, when, when we first got the funds, it was very restrictive, like, almost to the point, like, we thought we might have to give the money back, 'cause there was nothing we could spend it on. But I think a lot of communities were in that position, and had, and the government has since loosened it quite a bit. So, in terms of spending it on, you know, especially capital, just about anything we would wanna spend it on capitalized, we can, we can do that. So, this, the, the money, I should also say, it has to be kept separate from, like, regular Town Funds. It has to be tracked separately, it's accounted for separately. So, it's important that we, you know, keep it clean and separate from other business that the town does. And so, they're set up at the office to do that. So, but one of the requirements is, and we weren't sure about this at Town Meeting, but we, after more digging into a little bit deeper, we'd confirm that just like appropriating tax money, we have to get the town's approval to appropriate these ARPA funds as well. Even though they're not collected from local property taxes, they're collected from everybody's federal taxes in some way, right? So, right? So, it's still, you know, it's, I don't wanna, you know, it's, it's not right to say, well, this isn't tax money. Well, yeah, it is, it's just different tax money, it's not property tax, local tax. So, Town Staff and Mitch identified, you know, four things that they brought to us as, like, important pressing, really shouldn't wait until an April Town Meeting to move forward with, especially the HVAC here for the Town Office. And so, that's, that's why we're doing the special meeting and why we're asking voters to approve or authorize the appropriation of these ARPA funds for these purposes. So, Article Three is for seventeen thousand, five hundred and fifty for HVAC, but it's really just AC work at the fire station. And then, Article Four, which I think we're gonna, I think we're, you know, probably gonna change that to fifty-five thousand, three hundred to allow.
I understand.
Sorry?
It was forty-four, four, one, nineteen on the bid. I added the money in to make it fifty thousand, three hundred. So, it's already included in the language, the extra amount for the insulation.
I think we wanna, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, my apologies. This bid of forty-four, four, nineteen includes everything with both buildings, HVAC.
That is correct.
That is correct. So, these, these guys are totaling about sixty-seven, eight, fifty. So, even if we throw ten grand on there for insulation, that's wrong.
And we had talked, and it said, and.
So, is there something else in these numbers other than HVAC that needs to be spelled out?
Article Five covers the, the fire station side. And I may, I didn't wanna duplicate, did I duplicate?
No, Article One is the fire station.
Article Three is, Article Three is the fire station.
Yeah.
And I don't know, the, and we had talked about adding fifteen or whatever percent
That's right.
for the
Oh, just don't over that.
unforeseen, you know, so, just so that it's there, if, like, you know, if they find rotten, you know, ceiling joists when they go up to do insulation, or, you know, whatever, you know.
You're like thirty-four percent.
Yeah, so, maybe it's too high, so.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I just wanted to make sure.
Article Three and Four are the forty-four thousand, four, nineteen with the add-on amounts to handle any extras.
So, the.
So, like sixty-seven, eight, fifty.
Sixty-seven, eight, fifty, yeah.
So, let's say with the, with this bid and the insulation, call it fifty grand, right?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Right? So, so fifty grand, and if we were going to add fifteen percent onto that, you know, you're talking about, so that becomes fifty-seven, fifty, right?
Uh, hold on, apparently, they upgraded their, the numbers, I.
Were you using the total for both fire stations?
Yes.
So, these are the actual numbers.
Alright, I apologize, in my confusion, I, I went through, let me read the numbers to you.
That's the numbers you need, that one on the next page.
Okay, for the Agility, for the Fire Department, twenty thousand, one ninety-three, twenty-two, plus whatever you add in. Twenty thousand, one ninety-three.
Okay.
And for the Town Office, twenty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty-four cents, plus whatever you add in.
Alright, so.
Five twenty-six.
I made a mistake.
Five twenty-six. So, with five thousand for insulation.
Correct, and the math just wasn't working for me from what we discussed.
That becomes twenty-seven, five, twenty-six, you know.
So.
Call it twenty-eight.
That's still not four, four, though.
HVAC.
What's close?
HVAC of the fire station should be.
And Article Three would be twenty-two, five, fifty, unless you added more to it.
So.
Those, those numbers don't add up.
Now, hold it, hold it.
To the forty-four.
Twenty thou, be twenty-five thousand, one ninety-three.
For which one, Mitch?
Article Three.
So, the fire station is now twenty-five thousand?
Twenty-five thousand, one ninety-three, 'cause the base bid was twenty, broken out, twenty thousand, one ninety-three.
But why is that becoming twenty-five?
Did you wanna add anything else for unknowns?
Twenty, I mean, so, you, twenty-five percent.
Yeah, but not twenty-five percent. So, let us run the numbers, because you gave us, you gave us the fire number,
Yep.
and you gave us the town number, okay. So, the town number he gave us was twenty-two, five, twenty-six. If we add the five for insulation, that makes it twenty-seven, five, two, six. Let's just call it twenty-eight to keep round numbers.
Put some extra in there for building frame.
Times one point, one, five, if we add fifteen percent of that, is like thirty-two thousand, two hundred. So, that's the cost of the work, including the insulation, with a fifteen percent buffer, is thirty-two, two, for the Town Office. Thirty-two thousand, two hundred.
Kevin, can I interrupt with a quick question that might affect your basic math?
Sure.
Twenty thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars and twenty-two cents, plus twenty-two thousand, five hundred, twenty-six dollars and forty-five cents, is only forty-two thousand, seven hundred, nineteen dollars and sixty-seven cents. It is not forty-four thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars.
We know that, we've already established that.
The hot water heater has to be thrown into that, oh.
The hot water heater that came back.
Hold on, can we, can we, I don't mean to be, get out of line, can we just, just get convoluted? Can we just stick with Article Three?
Yes.
Get that number, and let's go to Article Four, instead of jumping back and forth.
The Article Three number was correct.
No, it wasn't. No, it's not.
Well, the twenty thousand was. Twenty-one ninety-three, twenty-two.
Right.
So, call it twenty thousand, two hundred, times one point, one, five, if we wanna tack fifteen percent onto that, makes it twenty-three, two, thirty.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
Good. Twenty-three, two, thirty.
Okay. The Town number that they gave us was twenty-two, five, twenty-six and forty-four cents.
Yep.
That's where we wanna add the insulation.
That's also where you have to add the hot water heater, because that wasn't included in that number.
Okay.
Because you're missing about eighteen, nineteen hundred dollars.
It is, it's what it was, eighteen. Okay, so, let's just call it two thousand for the water heater, alright? So, now, we're at, we're at.
Two five.
Twenty-nine, five, twenty-six, right? Adding seven thousand for the water heater and the insulation to the twenty-two, five, twenty-six, okay? So, thirty thousand. And fifteen percent on that is?
Forty-five.
Forty-five. So, with thirty-four, thirty-four thousand.
Yeah.
Five, thirty-four thousand, fifty dollars, about five hundred dollars.
Thirty.
And again, unexpended goes back to the ARPA fund.
That's right, it doesn't go into undesignated for the town, goes back into ARPA to be used for something else. And I, I should also say that, you know, at Town Meeting, there was a lot of interest in, you know, have the community having a say in how these ARPA funds are used. And the Board still intends to do that with, you know, we're using a little less than a third, not even a third, I think, of the money for a kind of, like, more urgent infrastructure. Gotta do it, if we don't do it, we'd have to spend capital anyway, type of stuff. And then, we anticipate a more, more of a blue sky, public discussion, if you will, on what to do with the, you know, the remaining balance for that, so. Okay, so, we're at twenty-three, two, thirty on Article Three, thirty-four, five hundred on Article Four. Article Five is, this was, I wasn't here this day, so you guys can speak more to this, but this was the work that Devin did on communication and information technology upgrades.
We wind up at sixty-five thousand.
Here at the, are we conf, we're confident in that, in that number?
Yes.
Yeah?
The sixty-five thousand for that, it's not really ringing a bell, sixty-five thousand for.
We've added, we've added all of the laptop-related technology.
Yep.
All of the console changeout, all of the connectivity to Eureka. Anything that we have done at the fire station for upgrading their technology. It includes telephone system.
Do we have an itemized list of all that stuff and the cost associated with those?
It's a difference, the difference of what was presented to us before is the cost of getting the services over to the Eureka Center.
Really, what it came down to.
Because we were gonna do something.
Okay.
And we initially were talking about air vibe system through the trees. We've now got a path that we're following that we believe is less expensive, but it's underground.
Okay.
Less expensive, but now, we're gonna need infrastructure in the ground, where before, it was just bouncing a wi, a signal over and cutting some trees.
They said put the cable on the surface, and I've suggested we put it underground in a PVC pipe just to protect it.
Yeah, I don't wanna, I don't wanna put it on the ground. I wouldn't be in favor of putting it on the ground and running it all the way over there.
I wouldn't either.
That's your suggestion?
That's my suggestion, put it underground.
So, this is, so, I'm getting less and less comfortable with this one.
Yeah, me too.
Because we don't have, we don't have an itemized list, we don't have a, like, a professional contractor's plan on how to.
Devin, you got that, buddy?
Do this. Yeah, please, Devin.
There you go. Thank you, Devin.
So, for the grand total of sixty-five, that is making more sense for specifically connection to Eureka. Air fiber would require us to clear about ten feet wide of trees, which is just not something we should do, there's a lot of dense trees over there. So, I suggested we look instead into running cable from here over to Eureka. Now, if we went directly through the trees, we'd still need to cut some trees down to get, you know, tunneling underneath. So, there is a path slightly over that way that we can follow, and we can bury it under that. So, no trees have to be cut. It's gonna be a little more expensive, I don't have the exact quote yet. Supposed to be getting that tomorrow, from what I'm told. But, we also, I just found out today that the firewalls at all three town locations are old and are not working as they're supposed to, which means there's potential security problems.
Is this, is this a software firewall, or is this an actual?
It, we, we have, we use Sophos XGS firewalls that are plugged into the network.
Okay, thank you.
So, the cost of replacing all three of those comes out to four thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars. So, that is factored into our total. We also are replacing all the computers, basically, since they're all extremely old now. So, I don't have exact for how much that's gonna be, but it's gonna be anywhere from twenty to twenty-five thousand for this building, fire station, and Public Works, 'cause we're bundling it all together. So, that sort of brings us roughly around thirty right now.
Devin, do you have, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Yeah.
But do, do you have this somewhat on a sheet in front of you, like, with these numbers broken down? Or is it just, or better yet, can we go this way, if you don't mind?
Yeah.
Could you just get a sh, whatever the hell you write on this whiteboard with, and give me the computers, give me the infrastructure, give me the cost of the hardware, and what if the sixty-five thou, thousand? Maybe the audience would like to see that, too?
Yeah.
'Cause it's hard to follow this.
We don't need, we don't need, like,
I just need.
firm, like, bids at this point.
Right.
But we need, like,
Ballpark, give me the ballpark.
Cost estimates that were, that are maybe a little bit better than ballpark, but, you know. But I mean, we need to, but it needs to be broken down.
Just need a quick summary, yeah.
That, where, how everything adds up to sixty-five thousand.
He's got quite a bit of work done on this, from what we've seen in the past, but it's just, right now, without that, I have no idea what the hell we're talking about.
Yeah.
So, if you have something that you could just, just give us a quick summary, I'm not asking, you don't need to be very detailed, just a quick, just something that we can follow.
I guess I'll just try to explain what needs to be done at Eureka, to sort of give you a picture. So, right now, there's really nothing there. So, we're starting with, once the wire gets there, we have to set up a network switch, patch cables if we're going into the walls, which I don't know if we're doing that yet. We might only need to have Wi-Fi over there, and then, one cable that will go to whatever computer we use to stream off of. We are going to be getting new cameras, which I don't have a price for yet, but that can range from either being fairly cheap to over-expensive, which we aren't gonna do. We are saving these mics, so we don't have to buy new microphones, but we do need a new video and audio encoder, because this is analog, and anything we do from the future will be digital. So, all that stuff is what we don't have yet. So, we need to purchase that. And currently, I don't know how much that's going to be exactly, so I'm leaving a pretty wide, you know, set amount of around twenty-five to thirty thousand to put for that.
Will this, will, will what you have in your, in your head, will that provide the technology required to support hybrid meetings at the Eureka Center? Meaning, some people could be there in person, and others would be joining via Zoom on a television monitor of some sort, without the audio feedback issues.
That can be set up, it's not something I've specifically looked into yet.
I, I, you've done a lot of good work on this, so please don't, don't take this as not appreciative of that. But this is not ready.
No.
It's, it's the, this is a lot of money, and it's also the type of thing where, you know, a technology mistake is an expensive mistake. You know, if you don't have the right equipment or the right approach. You know, there's still a lot of cost unknowns. We're not clear on the capabilities that we're going to have or not have. I think, you know, hybrid meeting capability is a pretty important one going forward, so. My sense is that, is that we remove Article, that we not put Article Five on the, on the warrant. Unless there's a piece of that, I mean, we could imagine that maybe there's a mission-critical piece of that that we should do now, that we have more certainty about.
Right, what I think was, what was presented, the meeting you weren't here, was more the, not so much the computers, the microphone, but the phone system, which you need upgraded, right? Which is, is something that I think needs to be done sooner rather than later.
Yeah.
So, I think, I think you're right, if we go back to just those things, and then address the other things later on, when we were able to get the, the quotes and all that stuff, I think that would be better. But, so, since I think, I think you said mission-critical, I think that would be somewhat critical for you.
Yeah, so, and we kinda, can we do that tonight, do you think? Because if we're going to put an article on the warrant, we need to, we need to vote to do that tonight.
I have phone and internet all figured out, all the paperwork is put together.
So, what's to do, when you say phone and internet, that's just this building, that's not going to Eureka Center, right?
It's this building, fire station, and Public Works.
Okay, so.
The stuff at Eureka is stuff that we're doing.
I think there's more work to be done on that piece.
Yes.
Yeah. So, so for the mission-critical stuff that supports fire station, Public Works, and Town Office, do we have a number for that?
Yes, it is roughly six hundred dollars for installation.
Do we have a total, a total, like, for it?
And, and also, I wanted to throw in, there are some computer components we do need immediately that should be in there as well.
Yeah, like, well, that's, that's the other thing, do you like, you know, do we need to replace all the computers at once? Or can we do it, well, 'cause it's ARPA funds, so it's, it's not like.
But could we come, could we come back in April with a better number on the computers?
Yeah, I think it generally, yes, but I think, but I think there are things, like, I know,
No, I don't have.
I know that some of the computers, like, I know especially the, like, Janet uses. I know that some of the computers, like I know especially the, like Janet uses, um, she's having problems with, so I think.
Yeah.
We should, if we can identify the mission critical stuff. But we, but you, Devin, think of it this way, you know, when, when we go to a town meeting and somebody who's, who hasn't been sitting in these discussions, you know, asks a question, it's like, well, what is this, what is this for? What are you doing? We need to be able to say, um, we need X dollars to replace the phone systems at the fire station because they don't work and the chief is missing calls and we're missing calls. We need X dollars, you know, for computers in the town office because, you know, they're outdated, they're a security risk. You know, whatever the reasons are, we, and we need, so that we can say, you know, this is, this is what it's for. And justify the number, because one thing we definitely know is that if, if voters don't think they know why we're asking for something, they'll, they'll just say no, you know, um, so.
So I do have one question.
Yes.
There are obviously monthly costs associated with the internet and phones.
Yeah.
Do you know how that affect, like how ARPA plays into that?
I think you should, I think the, um. I believe.
I think that would have to be addressed on each department's budget. Like right now, they're currently, you know, they have a, they have an internet expense and they have so forth. And what he's saying, by switching over to some of these services for greater capabilities for download speeds, upload speeds, et cetera, et cetera, there's a higher cost for that and that's what, we're not gonna, we're not gonna encompass that into an, uh, an ARPA fund. That's gonna have to be an annual basis.
I see that's gonna be, be part of the budget going forward.
So when it comes to phone and internet for ARPA funds, are you looking at like first months?
I would say, I would say include, we should include certainly any equipment or, or labor to install equipment or anything like that and, um.
Cause I do, I do, I do have those numbers for you. I just, they're not in here, so I'll have to go grab those, but, um.
No, we're gonna have our conversation, then you guys can come in later, okay?
But I would say that firewall, which I have a quote here, I only have one copy, but it can be passed around. That is mission critical should be included on this ARPA funding.
So I think we, we need, can we get, um, can we get a list on one piece of paper?
Yeah, we need.
Like what's, what's, yeah, or up there, even up on there. What's the mission critical stuff?
I have it in my car. I have what he presented in, in my car. If you give me a minute to go get it.
I'll give you ten.
Yeah. What's the mission, what are the, what are, what is each mission critical thing and what is the price tag associated with it?
Be great. Anderson, narrow line. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I miss just.
They're not speaking with each other some.
Just fine, we just gotta. Justify it.
Hey Devin, real quick, while he's grabbing that, I mean, at this point since we have to drop a line, do conduit, stuff like that, why not just add another internet service to it?
That's the thing, well, we need a professional to come in and evaluate that. Like, so we, what, first thing we need to do is like, what are our requirements? You know, what do we wanna be able to do in which building? And then, and then get proposal on how much is the cost to do that?
I thought that's what they did and that's why, see, uh, Spectrum or whoever held that up in that year, now that we can't do that.
Seems like it'd be easier to wear. Suggesting with the ARPA funding, that when we finalize vendor X, that we get the hardware, software for one year or the balance for this fiscal year.
Right.
So we don't have to, and it's all a package.
Yeah, 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 I, I, that's where I am, I do.
And that's what we've done with the installation.
Yeah.
It was all in a neat folder until I had to get in, the folder for someone else.
Are you talking, is it this document here?
This one, I think.
Six twenty-eight.
I think it's, I think that, yeah.
Yeah, and that was, that, on here is the quote for.
So the new total phone and internet cost, eleven thousand eight hundred dollars a year, is that right?
Yes.
Is that just the monthly charge difference or does that include the, the new hardware too?
For, not new computers, that's just.
No, 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 just phone and internet.
Yep, so, uh, the final price is going to be four hundred and sixty-eight fifty a month and the install, which is just a one time, of five ninety-seven. That is the total, that is what Comcast will charge us if we do this.
And that includes public works?
Yes.
And that included the phones, right?
Fire station.
Yep, that's phone and internet together.
That's where it gets a little, that's, now my memory's starting to jog again, that's where it gets a little, so that number is basically assessed out per annual, an annual number, but then it's including the equipment, like so the phone, so we're not buying, let's say, seven thousand dollars of phones. It's a monthly fee to have all new phones upgraded, so that's where it gets a little tricky.
So they own the equipment still and this is like your, this is like your cable box.
Cable box at home.
Yeah, that's exactly what it is. And that's why it gets a little bit trickier, so it's.
Okay.
It's almost like you're, you're using ARPA funds to pay bills for your new services for the year and then next year you'll be back on your, your calendar, your fiscal budget or whatever.
But in five years' time, the technology changes sufficiently.
I totally agree with going that route, don't get me wrong, that's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying it's, it is a little bit harder now that it's all coming back to me.
So it's, um.
The cost isn't necessarily something to handle. Hey, you're buying this.
Monthly number again?
Monthly costs are four sixty-eight fifty.
Four sixty-eight fifty.
Right, basically your start with.
In a one-time charge per location of five ninety-seven.
No, 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 total, the total for all three locations, one-time charge of five ninety-seven.
So it's, uh, six hundred dollars to, but the.
Going in.
I'm getting twenty-five hundred bucks basically, to do, because we're talking September through December.
Yeah.
Right.
Great.
Yep. Alright, so phone, internet, twenty-five hundred. What about, so what's, what are we asking for in terms of computers?
So computers, we're replacing, there are seven desktops here and one laptop that's getting replaced. There are.
Are you planning on, are you thinking you would replace desktops with desktops or laptops?
Yes, so it's a one for one. It'll be, it'll be the same, so if there is a desktop and they wanna keep a desktop, which nobody said they don't.
Oh, I would, I would ask both ladies in the front office that question again, because they have come at me hard for laptops, um, versus, uh. It's a pretty good reason for it, like, one, like, if they have a laptop, then, you know, the treasurer, for instance, can, you know, take an hour and work in the back office and not in view of the customer service window and not be disturbed for a bit. If the town clerk has a laptop, they can actually have that at the polls and, um, which they have found valuable sometimes, so I. And, and I would tell you that I almost, I, these days with technology, I almost see no reason to buy a desktop. Almost everything should be a laptop with some sort of a docking station and a monitor or something, um, so. Yeah.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, it's all, it's all I have.
Yeah.
That's all I use.
Well, even if, even a laptop, you can, as I've done, you can connect a keyboard to it.
Yeah. Well, that's what I mean, yeah, docking station and it's all, it's all US, it's all like one cord now, so.
One cord, yeah.
Well, I would, I've had many discussions with them, they haven't brought it up with me, so this is the first I'm hearing that they want this. So I didn't plan for that.
Right.
I know that Chief has said that at the fire station, they want all desktops, that's fine. That's what we are currently getting quoted, um, and public works. You have, uh, what is it, how many, what's the current?
We have one, two, three, one, two, three, three laptops and a desktop.
Yeah, so we're keeping that the same way, but getting newer.
Why do you need four computers at public works?
Four computers at public works?
Foreman has one, I have one, and there's one at the, at the front desk that they use for the speed limit signs and other, and diagnostics.
Is there an opportunity to consolidate that to three? Like, does the mechanic, like, can the mechanic and then that last one you said for signs, can that be one computer? I mean, is he just using it to essentially order parts?
Uh, he does research and that's where he keeps all of his, uh, keeps all of his, uh, data and.
Probably his tech manuals and stuff like that.
And that's where he has the, uh, that's where the, uh, he, he needed a new laptop. Inventory, yeah, and, and to get into the websites, diagnostics, they're all, all in there, so. The JD link, the John Deere equipment, if something happens or works, the computer will tell him whether it's in this part of the machine or that part. So then the, the, they don't have to take his when they go to download the speed limit signs.
Okay, alright. Um, I won't get too far in the weeds here.
We're in the weeds.
Ah, yeah, we are in the weeds. But we, we need, if we're gonna put a technology question on the warrant, we need a number and we need to be able to speak to the number, you know?
What are they running for, um, operating system on all these laptops right now?
Um, we'll be doing Windows ten right now. Windows eleven still has tricky things with older software and we're still running old Trio. So until we have to, um, we're gonna keep running Windows ten because we know it works.
So, so we are running Windows ten on everything right now?
Yes.
Thank you.
New laptops are gonna come with Windows eleven?
They are not necessarily.
Yeah, you can, you can.
You can order them.
Yeah, you can get them, figure it out. You can get them with them, okay. So what do we, what's a, what's a ballpark estimate for a desktop?
One desktop?
Yeah, just one.
It'll be a little over a thousand dollars.
Okay, we'll call it.
That was monitor, everything in monitors or is that just?
Monitors, two hundred dollars per monitor.
So how about a, a, a cost per station?
Okay, so per station, we're looking at probably anywhere from thirteen hundred to fifteen hundred depending.
Sixteen. I was gonna say, I think that's.
And the battery backup?
Well, that was something that is a like to have, not a need to have, so we can discuss that way.
They're on twenty bucks, right?
Right.
Cause there's nothing to say, there's nothing to say that we can't do another technology article at town meeting in April. So what I'm thinking is, is that like, for instance, if we say computers, like, we don't need to sit here and figure out exactly what we need. But if we know we ballpark, okay, we're roughly fifteen hundred bucks a station, let's, let's ask for money, you know, for three or four. You know, whatever it is, whatever people are comfortable with, you know, um, or, you know, you can ask for seven and say, well, seven at fifteen hundred dollars each. What is that?
Get them all configured, right, you know, at the same time.
What did I say, twenty, I said twenty-five hundred for phone internet, right?
Yep.
Yes.
And we're ten-five for computers.
Yeah.
Okay, what else have we got that's mission critical?
The firewall.
Firewall.
Which will round up to five thousand, but it won't be five thousand, but I know you're rounding up.
Yeah, 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 no, we want a little, little wiggle room in there.
Yeah.
Because what we, what's gonna be really tough, we'll, we won't, we, I don't think, we're gonna wanna avoid a situation where if we under-project this a bit.
Yeah.
We're not gonna be able to say, oh, we're two thousand dollars short, let's go take two thousand dollars from our capital fund and marry it together.
We can get it.
It's not gonna work with ARPA. We gotta keep everything like, like a, the wall between the two.
Right.
Um, so we wanna make sure we're asking for enough and we, I think we err on the high side a little bit, knowing that if we don't need it, it goes right back into the ARPA pool and we can reappropriate it. Okay, so firewall, you comfortable with five thousand? You don't think it'd be more than that?
That is what the quote says, that's what it's gonna be, yes.
Okay, alright, so we're at.
Eighteen thousand dollars.
Twelve, thirteen, eighteen thousand dollars.
Um, can I, he said he had four and he said he had four, and so that's eight.
Oh, wait, the seven.
So that's why I feel like. Oh.
Like, I don't want to win.
Okay. Sorry, I just felt like those numbers didn't add up.
Well, you're right, they don't. Alright, so, um.
But if we're gonna upgrade, we should have.
So, okay, so for phone, internet, seven computers, firewall, we're eighteen thousand. Anything else that you think is mission critical that like?
When do you wanna move into Eureka for?
I think we're gonna, I think we put that off and we re-discuss that when we have a new town manager in place.
Okay.
Um, and that's not, there is not a sense of urgency on that.
Okay.
So we came up with eighteen here with a pretty good explanation. My sense is we round that and ask for like twenty or twenty-five and for technology upgrades.
I'd say twenty-five.
I'd say twenty-five too.
Yeah, I'd rather go higher.
I'd rather go higher.
Are we including computers in that?
Yeah, I had ten thousand five hundred for seven computers at fifteen hundred dollars each.
That's just here.
Oh, what, the seven here?
There's, yes.
Oh, okay, and then, okay, well, let's, let's keep going then, what else we got? So the seven was just for town office?
Yes, there's four at the fire station.
And another four.
At public works.
So another twelve thousand.
Can you explain what the seven for here are?
There's two computers at the window, the two computers at the desks, there's Mitch's computer, uh, Donna Hayes has a computer, um.
Codes.
Codes has a computer, and then there's one in my office.
That's eight.
That's eight?
We got George, are you counting that?
Yeah. George and Donna.
George Dunn.
They use the same, right? George and Donna.
I know. We are getting, okay, I see where there's confusion now. Seven desktops, one laptop.
Oh, that's what it was, okay. And we don't need to specify desktop or laptop tonight.
We'll just say computer.
We're ballparking work stations at fifteen hundred bucks per work station.
A laptop's eighteen hundred, two thousand, they, a few hundred bucks more.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're good.
We got padding.
We got padding and, you know, we, if, if it turns out, let's say, um, if we budget for, if, if, and I hate to use the word budget because we're not really budgeting, but if we appropriate for fourteen and we only buy twelve, then that's fine, so.
We wanna do thirty-five instead of twenty-five thousand.
That's what it sounded like.
Yeah.
Yeah. And Eureka will be a big project in April that we discuss.
Yes, we got some homework to do on that one first. Um, okay, so we're at, um. I bet I still, I still think we need to say, like, how many, how many, how many work stations are we kind of?
That's sixteen, I think.
I got, I'm at the sixteen.
Sixteen times fifteen hundred.
Twenty-four.
So twenty-four thousand, so this is a.
One, twenty-five thousand, hundred and five thousand.
Although there's an element that we are also forgetting, the professional services fee from BEK, which I believe per computer is like, what was, I'm trying to remember, cause there was.
Aren't we paying a fee per computer now though, with BEK?
Well, it's an installation fee, so they, they set up the machines, they bring them here, they install them.
Three fifty?
Per computer?
Three fifty?
Yes, I know Alan had an estimate that.
Five hundred times six.
Per, per computer?
Per computer, yes.
Who's BEKA?
They are our IT company that manages all of our computers in our network.
And so you think that cost per, per station is what?
It, we should shoot for five hundred because.
How about the thirty-six, three, seven, seven?
We're getting closer to that, sixty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
So right now with, without any, we're, we're at thirty-nine, five. Cause I've got twenty-five hundred for phone internet, twenty-four thousand for computers, five thousand for the firewall, and eight thousand for KDA to do the install setup, whatever.
Now, I, I don't know because they haven't sent me the quote yet. I don't know if it's reduced because they're doing a bundle of them at the same time. I only remember seeing one quote for one computer that included that amount for professional services. And that was just for one computer. So it might not even be that much, but again, I'm told that I'm getting the quote tomorrow, which doesn't help us today.
No, it doesn't, but.
But you realize you're close to the sixty-five that.
Well, we're, we're still, we're twenty thousand dollars away from the sixty-five, but, so, without, without, go, sorry, go ahead.
We don't need to replace, like, I think you said you don't need a new computer, Calvin, so, I mean, there's.
We have wiggle room.
Yeah, so I'm inclined to put a number, so we're at, all in with everything we've listed so far, we're at thirty-nine, five. Do we put forty thousand on it, or forty-five thousand, you know, with a little bit of extra wiggle room?
What do you got? I, I, I am slight, I'm, the only thing I'm nervous about is the older software with the newer hardware, even if you still go with Windows ten, because you still have a different driver package in there with the new chipset.
But that's gonna be what we're paying B E K.
Yeah, that's what B E K is, they're gonna.
If that's what the five hundred's gonna cover, is that integration, then that's great, but if they come back and say, well, you gotta now upgrade a software program because of it.
We have to upgrade Trio, what's that gonna cost?
Well, with new computers, I mean, if we, if we know that ahead of time, then.
I would think this would just be a, a hard drive transfer with all they're doing, correct?
Well, well, uh.
That's the reason why there's so much of a setup fee, is they're gonna put the computer on the thing and they're gonna transfer hard drives over so that.
Well, the data, the data is one thing.
Well, I can break down what they do. They put the, all the computers on our domain network, they, in, they basically move the files. It's not like ripping out the.
I get it.
Solid-state drive, but they will transfer all the files for us.
Put the cord up.
Um, and then they come, they do the installation, so we don't have to touch anything, they go behind the desks and all that. Um, so that's what that money is for.
Who validates that Trio works on the machines? Is it us, or is it, uh?
Well, I'll, I'll be here on day of install, and I'm sure Janet will, and she's.
She's not shy.
She's not shy to say when there's a problem.
I'm assuming that's gonna be.
My Trio's not gonna work.
So you don't wanna do I T?
Well, at some point, your town is going to face.
Well, let's have this discussion as.
No, I'm just saying, it's a little late, the day of installing the computers, to find out your Trio's not gonna work.
Well, I'm assuming that's something they're gonna test.
And I see currently no reason why it wouldn't work. There's no specific drivers that are currently in use.
So what I'm looking for is who's doing that integration of the Trio software bef, and I'll say it beforehand, who is gonna try that out, or who's gonna do it the day of, cause I don't think it's you, and I don't think it's Janet.
B E K can do it, cause anytime we have trouble.
So anytime we have trouble with Trio, we call them.
Yeah.
For the install.
Your, your laptop has, um, Trio on it, correct?
Yes, it does.
And, and they've done that before, that's a newer laptop, and Ruth had a new one a couple of years.
That's what they knew.
Trio answers the application problems that Janet has, but the installs have never, they've been compatible.
Yeah.
With the.
This is, this is not the first time we bought in the last couple of years that I've been here, at least. New computers and there had to be an integration of.
So yours is Windows ten? And they integrated.
Yeah, they handle that, the B E K handle all that.
Okay, good, I'm good, I'm good, okay.
I just wanna make sure we're covered there, under the, cause that's what we're, that'll be with the actual money.
You're back to your basic question.
Sorry. Which basic question?
Grand total comes to?
Yeah, well, the grand total, I'll, I'll recap it, so phone internet, we have a, a twenty-five hundred dollar number on that. Computers, we have a twenty-four thousand dollar number on that, firewall's five thousand, professional services eight thousand, so total of those is thirty-nine thousand five hundred. Um, and so, um, so the question is, do we wanna include all that in our ask on this warrant article, and, and if so, um, what is the total amount of money we are, we want to have the ability to appropriate for that purpose?
In case of, with the balance going back, that is un, unexpected.
Yep, yep.
So, to me, it seems awfully high, and personally would, would like to try to narrow down, like, I'm hearing Calvin doesn't need a new computer, the town manager wouldn't need a new computer, if that's fairly new.
Two years old, that's a.
Um, but, at the same time, I think we need to, that builds in the extra, so I, I would suggest forty thousand.
Okay. Is that a motion?
Sure.
Is there a second?
And it's hesitant. It's, it's, because, because it's important and some of the stuff needs to get done, or it's gonna have to get done in the near future. I think it needs, it needs to get done sooner.
The next time we have a chance.
The sooner, the sooner that we get it, the new software, the new computers, the sooner people get used to it, and I'd rather do it now than come town meeting time, election time.
Hmm, so you're, you're kinda arguing against your own motion.
I know I am, so I, I would.
We can say that for discussion, is there a second?
Yeah, right, I, we don't have a second on this motion yet, so we can say that motion is dead on the floor for right now, so we don't have a second, so.
I'll second it for discussion, just to keep the ball rolling.
I just killed it.
Oh, you killed, my bad, I didn't even kill it, I didn't even know, I heard all this discussion, I'm like, what the hell are we talking about?
Chairman, if I can, I'm only a short timer. This is a unique opportunity to rebuild your I T infrastructure at a cost savings ultimately what you would have normally have to charge the taxpayer down the road. And I look at it as an opportunity for the taxpayers to recognize that you're doing your diligence, with all due respect, sir, we keep cutting and cutting and shaving every single time that I've been here and listening. This is a great opportunity, not to waste money, but to make the investment to our people who can effectively utilize the ser, the programs, the services, and the hardware. Take full advantage of what its intent was, and do it respectfully, and you are doing it. And if in fact, there's a question of a laptop that may function, I'd get rid of it, because it's going to go bad, either hardware or software, within the next year or so, and then you're gonna fight this battle again, whether it be at next April, May, town meeting, or whatever.
I would rather buy, I'd rather use ARPA funds and buy a computer a year early than buy it a year late and have to use property tax funds.
I'm, I'm, I'm with you there, I agree.
Yeah.
So, is there a, a motion for a different amount? Other than the, beyond the forty thousand that?
I just, I just can't, I mean, I, I understand, I'll tell you what my hesitation is, or I'd give you one, um, I'm, I'm fine with the firewalls, I'm fine with the phone systems, I understand the needs and the computer components that are needed to run the town office and so forth. I just don't like the ambiguity of it, if there's a quote coming in tomorrow and we're just premature, I, I, I just don't like explaining things like, without seeing it in writing, like, we, we got quotes from H VAC companies, I know what we're buying, I don't know what we're buying.
So, I, let me, so.
If there's a way to clarify, cause I just don't like, yeah, we bought, I guess we bought the wrong stuff, guys.
No, I think, keep in mind, what we're, what we're trying to do tonight is not necessarily decide we're gonna buy sixteen computers or fourteen computers, we're asking, we're trying to put an amount in a, in an article, say, that appropriates up to, whatever the number is, for, um, for technology upgrades in municipal buildings. And when the question comes up, you know, well, what is that money for, then we can say, well, we think, you know, our estimates right now are telling us, you know, to upgrade the phone internet service is twenty-five hundred, and you know, yada, yada, down through the list. Between now and the town meeting, we're gonna get a more definitive estimate, so that, the, the explanation there might be that, um, we'll, we'll be able to be a little bit more definitive, I think, to your point on what it is, that specifically the money would be spent on like, how much, like, whatever quote you're waiting to get, and we would have a little bit more clarity on that.
The, the ARPA funds, if not used, go back into the ARPA funds category.
That's right, that's right.
So I, I mean, then if, if that's the case, I would be back to like, a number of forty, forty-five thousand dollars.
I'd do it at forty-five.
You know what I mean?
Make sure we've.
It's, it's not a, it's not a necessarily an authorization to.
Spend it.
Spend it, it's an authorization to.
Up to.
It's up to.
And we will have, long before the special town meeting, a listing.
And I guess I'm, I'm back in a neutral spot, I'm back in a comfortable spot.
Yeah, and I think, you know, and I think this points out, you know, like, Sid, I mean, Mitch said, you know, uh, for the town meeting, you know, and hopefully there's enough budget committee members here tonight that have heard this explanation, or, you know, whether you agree or not, I'm not asking, but at least you understand where the numbers are coming from, um, that, and the reasoning behind the amount, so. Um, so, I, I heard the number forty-five a couple of times, is there a motion?
I think a motion that we, uh, appropriate forty-five thousand dollars out of ARPA funds to cover the phone system, computers, uh, firewall, and the associated, uh, service company to install such.
Is there a second to that?
I'll actually second that.
If you second that, any discussion? For the discussion, we're ready for a vote, alright, all in favor? Alright, we have a five-zero vote for Article five at forty-five thousand dollars. Okay, um, we should, um, I'm also, uh, going to strike, um, Eureka Center out of this, cause.
Yeah, we need to.
That's a different, that'll be a different deal.
Yeah, that's, we gotta talk about that some more.
Yep, okay, Article six, um, is asking for sixteen thousand dollars for G I S tax mapping warrant, and correct me if I'm wrong, this is a pretty firm number, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
This is a firm number, it includes subscription costs for two years.
Right.
Just like your H V A C has a two-year parts and maintenance agreement, this is two years.
This will pay for the creation of the G I S maps.
And the upgrading for the next two years.
Upgrading for the next two years.
That's directly proportional to the tax maps that are used to keep our tax billing accurate and timely.
And so it's, it's, it's that, so the benefits of the G I S mapping are that, but there's also, you know, I've learned over the last couple of years that there's potentially a pretty significant, um, workload savings for the town office staff.
Yeah.
They get pounded with phone calls from banks and real estate agents about, you know, this lot and that, you know, whatever, and when you, when all that is on G I S, they just, they can just refer them to the website, say, that information is on the website, you can go get it there, and they're not the ones that have to go mining that information for them, so.
What does G I S stand for?
Geographic Information.
Yeah.
There you go.
It's a mapping that, it's a map that tells you, like, property description, book and page number of the registry of deeds, owners, it's.
Outline.
It's all public information that we have on paper now, um, but it's, it digitizes it.
It's something he, you know, when I was doing title work, we used it all the time in Lewis.
There's not many towns that don't have it.
Right. I think it's fascinating.
So that's what that one is. I love looking at it.
Okay.
Out of all of them, I mean, outside of the heating and air conditioning, only cause we're in dire need of that, I mean, I think this is probably the most important thing that town could utilize.
Yeah, alright, so twenty-two, six, plus.
Do I know the fees associated with that, Mitch? We go with sixteen K?
Yes, I'm coming with one eighteen, seven, thirty.
Is it the software that costs? What, can you explain what that?
The map, they have to create the maps.
Who's they?
It's a special consultant who's hired, just like bidding any other consultancy, they will take and utilize a software, and they also then allow us to use that software so that we can bring it up to our website, and instead of having a hard copy, which we will have, we have the ability to say to, to the citizen, go to our website, click on, and it opens it right up. Sophisticated G I S has a whole lot more information for property and everything, we're doing the basis for the tax re, relationship to our tax bills, uh, we don't put on there who's delinquent, that's not the intent of it, but with the town that's under a lot of subdividing, this is allowing us to keep up, and it also allows us to tell realtors, and those who are handling mortgages, you go to the website, there's the information, you can draw it down, and you can use it as you need to. Instead of having to research with a hard copy, bring the, the file in here, and they look at the tax information on the property itself.
As soon as the realtors find that out, they won't be calling town office.
That's right.
They're just gonna call the town office.
Well, as soon.
They'll have to take the call, but they, they don't have to do any work after they take the call.
Well, as soon as the realtors know that, they won't be bothering.
Eventually, eventually.
A lot of them will be.
What did you come up with?
So, yeah, I'd say number, so basically, all, with the four articles here, uh, with the, the adjusted amounts, that's a hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty, which is, uh, twenty-eight percent of four hundred and twenty-one thousand, so, a little over a quarter of the money.
So are you saying that the public will still have a great amount of opportunity with the balance of ARPA funds for input along the way?
Yeah, cause then, because then we're out of the, um, we, we get, we're kinda like, okay, what's critical infrastructure stuff? And that's kinda what this is, and then next, it's kinda like, okay, we've got, you know, three hundred, yeah, just a little over three hundred thousand dollars, what do we wanna do with that? You know, and, like, the chief will come before us and say, well, I want a hundred and seventy-five of that to refurbish the ladder truck, right? And, or in somebody, and I'm sure Calvin's got a list of stuff, you know, and, and, and people, uh.
Is that going to East Coast Customs?
Other people in town may have some other thing, like, I think we should.
That'd be cool.
You know, uh, I don't, you know, I don't know, build a baseball field, some, I, I don't know, I mean, that's what people will.
But they have the input and the capability of looking at the lion's share, we're taking care of the stuff we use every day for conducting the business.
Yeah, so, okay.
So what do we need, we need a motion?
So, now, yeah, so I would, um.
Do we need a motion on the sixteen thousand, or?
Or take it as a bundle now that you've got.
We haven't, yeah, we haven't, we didn't edit it, so I don't, um, so I guess I would entertain a motion to approve the, uh, special town meeting.
Warrant.
You know what, I'm gonna do these one at a time, because there's a couple of, um. Entertain a motion to, actually, we've already, we've already done that for three, four, and five, actually, but we need to make an amended motion on five. Um, I would entertain a motion on Article five to amend the amount appropriated to forty-five thousand dollars and to, um, remove reference to the Eureka Center from that question.
So moved.
Josh moves.
I'll second.
Joe seconds, any discussion on that? All in favor?
And I, I would like to just add something, not to the motion at all, but, um, Devin did a great job on all the, uh, upgrades to the communication.
Yes, absolutely.
I don't want it to be lost, that the amount of work he's put into it, um, the Eureka Center does need to get done, it's important for the growth of the town, we're gonna have to do that, I think it's a really good thing to do, gives us options later, um, for moving folks around if need be, um, and holding meetings over there instead of here, which opens up the town hall for, for better things later, so it's very important we get Eureka on the, on the ballot in April for additional funding to get that upgraded, and, uh, but, thank you, Devin.
May I say, if Devin hadn't stepped in, you would not have been able to count on me, and we would have had to hire someone who knows this stuff. He knows it.
Yes, yeah, no, he does, he did a wonderful job, putting that together.
Okay, so we've, we voted on three, four, and five, um, so now I think we can do this all together. So I would entertain a motion to appro, approve the warrant, uh, for the special town meeting on August sixteenth with the, uh, as presented with the previously approved edits.
So moved.
Josh moves, is, is there a second on that?
I'll second.
So, I see some confused looks to, people wondering, what are, what were the edits? The edits were the amounts.
Nope, yeah.
So the amount in Article three, four, and five, and removing Eureka Center for Article five, so that, those are the edits.
Yep.
Wouldn't there be an Article six for the G I S?
Yeah, that's the as presented, we didn't have to amend, we didn't change the amount on Article six, no, that's fine. Um, alright, so we have a, any further discussion on that? Alright, all in favor? Okay, we have a, we have a warrant.
Are you welcoming questions from the legislature?
Yes, please.
A member of the select board be present at the special meeting of the legislature?
I, I'm on a family vacation, so I can't, I know the town manager is planning on being there, um, and it, it's, it's really a town manager thing, I mean, um, but I can be there.
And a second question, um, the.
Another, but I'm sorry, but other board members, if they're, it's Monday, Monday night, I believe, and I.
And Devin will be there with me.
Um, so with the, the sample articles that were sent to the. Um, so with the sample articles that were sent to the Budget Committee members, when speaking of the amounts, I thought it was mentioned that the amounts are gonna be referred to, um, not to exceed, I thought the wording was not to exceed an amount, as opposed to a specific amount.
It's not the, that's the effect, um, but the, I think what you may have been referring to is that, you know, I think I said in the email, like, the, the number, the, the appropriate, the money spent can't exceed this, um, but the number is the number. That's, you know, it's, it's a, the format that the articles are in are what's called a closed format versus an open format, and, and that, we just took the wording right off the MMA document. So basically, when you, to see if the town will vote to appropriate twenty-three thousand, two hundred and thirty, that basically authorizes expenditures up to no more than that amount. So it could be less, but it can't be more.
And if you had the wording "up to," then it insinuates that discussion can be on the floor to change it?
It might, but it's the, the wording isn't necessary, because it's, that's, that's the way the question is.
I think if it's to, if it's open for discussion, it has to say to see what sum.
It's exactly right. That's the open article form. That's what we're all more used to. But I think the reason MMA recommends this format is it kinda gets back to that, making sure that just the ARPA approvals are very clean, that we're not, there's no temptation on a town floor to say, well, let's use ARPA for this much of it and capital for this much, and, um, and I think, uh, so that's, anyway, that's where we are. That's what that means.
And according to MMA, even though it says appropriate, it doesn't just put it in that pigeonhole. You can appropriate the money for something else if there's money left over.
Yeah, because if you don't, if you don't, um, if you don't, yeah, appropriate doesn't mean you have to spend it. It just means.
Right, but it means it goes towards that.
It goes towards that, but anything left over goes back to the ARPA funds.
Right, right.
So whatever's left over.
So where does it say that?
That's just.
That's a, that's a rule.
That's the rule. And probably in the eighty-seven-page ARPA documents somewhere.
To look at it differently, if we didn't spend sixteen thousand dollars under Article Number Six, only spent ten thousand dollars, it can still stay there for that if there's other GIS work, but it can't go back into a general fund account. It has to go back to ARPA, because by twenty-twenty-six, it's either expended or there'd be a recapture. I'm sure the Congress will ask to have it sent back.
That's, that's a good point, because these, um, we're not, there's no calendar boundary here, like there is with a budget. So it's not like, if we don't do this by the end of the year, we have to, like, re-ask the question. Um, we don't in this case. There's, ARPA has an end date, it's like two or three years, so you have to use the money, or I don't know what you do, you give it back, I guess. And, uh, but you, we don't have to reauthorize the same money the next year if it didn't, you know, make, because it's not a budget. It's not, it's not property tax money.
Doesn't lapse with our calendar year.
Right.
So, a follow-up to that, so using your same example, it isn't GIS, so let's say instead of costing sixteen thousand, it costs twenty thousand. Are we able to ask for additional monies for the same item?
Oh, yes. Oh, absolutely.
But not at that same special town meeting. You would have to wait till the next.
Of course.
Yeah, so in April, no, that's a, that's a good, like, if we found that, like, maybe the computers were a lot more expensive than we thought, and we could only buy ten instead of fourteen, and we still wanted to get the other four, we could have a question on, on the April warrant, just like one here with a different amount, to fund additional computers, or whatever it is.
But you won't see the word "raise" in the question.
Right, yeah, exactly. It's appropriate the ARPA funds, so.
I have a question that kinda follows that up, same thing. If it was ten thousand and there were six thousand left over and it goes back into ARPA, are those six thousand dollars already earmarked for that, or when it goes back in, now it's free to appropriately appropriate?
It's the latter.
Free to, free to.
Or somewhere else. Is whatever the, whatever the, um, whatever the balance is in ARPA fund, you can, within the rules of the ARPA program, you can appropriate it however you want. You can appropriate it, you could have a computer question every two months if you wanted to, you know.
I just didn't know if it had already been appropriated to that specific subject, if even though it didn't get spent, it goes back in. Does, is that already now earmarked for that line?
Yeah, no, it's not like, like a capital account would be like that. You know, you'd have to almost vote to take it out, to do, to repurpose it. No, it's, you don't have, you don't have to do that.
I think Congress intended, it's hard to figure out these days what Congress intends, is to have the money expended to infuse into the economy, and at the same time to help communities while helping taxpayers, even if it's their own money. So you, your argument is well worth asking, but quite frankly, if we spent eleven thousand dollars and got all the computers and the software and everything, and found that if we spent another few thousand dollars within that sixteen thousand to complete it, we could still do that. If we get the biggest bang for the buck, up to sixteen thousand dollars.
You have a?
Yeah. Um, so, um, so a member of the Budget Committee presented, at least to me for the first time hearing about it, maybe others, an opportunity for, for other funding. My guess is she should present that, the same information to, at the Budget Committee meeting on Monday. So it raises the question, if, if there's other funding available for the HVAC systems, why wouldn't we take advantage of that opportunity so we'd have more ARPA funds?
Yeah. Just, um, I think, I, I don't, I don't know about that grant opportunity, is the first I've heard about it tonight. Um, my sense is, from what I do know about grants, I don't know what the timing is like. I'm not sure that we'd be able to go through the application, award, receive the money, have it in time to, um, you know, do the work that needs to be done, you know, before this winter. That would be my, um, that would be my concern with that, so. I don't, do you have any further?
Yeah, so right now, it's through Efficiency Maine, and right now, the school application is open. I called Efficiency Maine and I asked what the process would look like for the municipal side of things. And they, I was told that it would look very similar to what the school, which I brought, what the schools have had to do to request, you know, the funds. They said that after the application has been accepted and approved, it's a week that you get the money. Um, it's a, it's part of the Main Jobs and Recovery Plan initiative to cut energy costs to schools. I brought the, I brought the press release about it. You know, I, so I'm gonna do the same exact thing that was gonna be my criticism, I'm doing that to myself right now, right? I, I, my constructive criticism in this process is that I, I'm honestly a little shocked at the lack of support for the numbers. You know, I, I get that everybody's, like, got the best intentions here, and I, I do hope that when the Budget Committee meets, we do have access to that quote that Devin is talking about. Um, you know, I, I'm, I'm surprised at the lack of support before we're putting something before the voters.
Uh, yeah, I'm gonna, I, I, I think, I think, you know, I'm not, I mean, so are you expecting, like, hard, like, um, detailed bids for everything before money is?
I'm not expecting hard detailed bids for everything, but I'm, I am expecting, like, more of a, I can't remember what the cost was. I think it was three hundred and fifty, it was five hundred dollars, you know. It, I, we're talking about other people's money, right? And, and you have to be able to support that, and I, like you even said in this meeting, I'm feeling really uncomfortable with this. This isn't ready. I'm, I'm just, I'm not trying to be critical, right, but I think all of us sitting in the room were feeling that same sentiment, like, this is not ready. And so part of my question is, what is the push other than being able to get it done before winter? Which I understand, this is something that absolutely needs to happen before winter. But when we're all sitting in this room trying to figure this out tonight, to get it done tonight for an August sixteenth meeting, I feel like, what is two more weeks to be able to explore a funding opportunity that opens in five days? And also have concrete information, a quote that's coming in tomorrow, which Rich spoke to. I, I feel confused about what the hard stop August sixteenth deadline is about. I just would like that explained.
Well, I think the, the, well, the August sixteenth was set as the date for the special town meeting, and that was to, um, the main driver for the timing was to get authorization in time to then get, you know, get the work done before winter. I mean, you know, August, it kinda feels like a long way away from heating season, but it's really not. It's just a few weeks away from heating season. Um, and I think, I mean, I, you're absolutely right about, um, things just didn't, I think, the way I would describe it, except for the Eureka Center, which is why we took that one completely off the table, I think, I think staff has the numbers, but they just didn't have it pulled together in, in a way that, um, lent it a lot of confidence to the thought process behind it. It, it's there, and I think we worked through it, and we've got chicken scratch here, and I agree with you that, you know, for the Budget Committee meeting, they need to have, you know, kind of like sheets that's like, you know, for this article, this is, this is where the number's coming from. I also think, I'm, and I agree with you about the, things are a little vague and ambiguous, but personally, I'm okay with that in the ARPA realm, much more so than I would be in the, you know, normal budget realm. Because again, we're, we're asking for an "up to" number, and if we, you know, so, and we've admittedly built in a little cushion. And if we, it allows us to have the power to, like, and the resources to get the work done that needs to be done. And if we don't use that much money, then it's back in the ARPA pool and available for some other use, so. And to the grant thing, I would not be opposed at all to, um, I don't think it has to be either or. I think we could still ask the question at town meeting to authorize the ARPA funds, and at the same time, apply for that grant. And if we get the grant, we don't use the ARPA funds. We don't have to, and it goes back into the pool for something else. But in the meantime, we have the authorization. If we don't get the grant, or if the timing doesn't work with what we need for the HVAC.
Okay, everybody in the room heard that. That's on the record, right? I mean, can, is this, honestly, like, I mean, because it's easy when you have the money sitting in the bank account to not go through the process if it's been approved, right?
And I would say.
Because I, I understand that the staff is extremely.
I was gonna say, I can't speak, I can't, I, I just say, I, I would, I wouldn't have a problem doing that. I, I can't speak to the bandwidth that town staff has to do that.
Right, well, that, and that's what, that's what my point is, right, is that there is this safety net, which is great, because the work needs to get done. But at the same time, I, I would use caution in doing that, because there is this avenue. If we're gonna do what you said, great, because then there isn't this pool of money that's available to us that is specifically, I mean, it's like to the T of what we're trying to do here, right?
Yeah, I know, but Heather, taken in context, you just brought this up seven minutes into our meeting.
And it's not, you can't even apply for it until five days from now. So I think, I think this timing, I would guess, is just not gonna work in this case. And I would, I would position it that this isn't a, let's do the grant, and if the grant doesn't work, we've got ARPA. I, I think we need to turn that around. We need to approve the ARPA funds, and if, if we're able to apply for and get a grant, great. But if not, no big deal, because, you know, again, this isn't property tax money that's coming out of a capital account. You know, it would be great if we didn't have to use it, if we could use that grant, but I'm not, I, I don't think it's in the best interest of the town to put the brakes on the entire process, because we might get this grant that we can't even apply for yet.
We'll get it. Well, I'm sure, I mean, I haven't seen it, but, I mean, it makes sense, and that makes sense, what Kevin just said also.
Who will also, in your opinion, put the grant application together?
I'm more than happy to volunteer to do that.
That's what I wanted to hear, because, because the reality is, there's a limitation, and the way you as a town have now worked to set it up, you're absolutely right. You've got a safety net. You've got the special town meeting, it sits right there, and we've already said before you even voted, unexpended funds go back to ARPA, and then you can still apply for, for this. So you're in the best of both worlds.
I just think it would be really unfortunate to torpedo the ARPA question because of the possibility of this grant. I think that would be not in the best interest of the town at all.
I think you'd have a lot of, a lot more townspeople voting to approve it, knowing that if the grant comes through, it won't be spent.
Maybe, I mean, yeah, that could be.
But it, it's an application for a grant.
It, it is an application for a grant, but it's not a, it's not like a shot in the dark.
Heather, when is the grant open to the towns?
What's that?
When is the grant open for us to apply? August first is when we can apply.
When, see, grants, I'm a grant writer, shy of expert, and I started the show as far as HVAC. When does the grant close? How long do they take applications before they start to review them? Because a lot of these are thirty, sixty, ninety-day windows.
So this is open for the school, open June twentieth, twenty twenty-two, application deadline, May thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, so a year.
Bingo.
So when do they start giving them out? I guess it's.
Yes, well, they, the way that it's worded, it says that, well, the person I talked to on the phone at Efficiency Maine said that once the application is, um,
Closed.
Approved, not closed, approved, and then it's, until the money comes out.
So that's just approved, but they, you just said, they give you a year window. Correct. They give you a year window to apply. Then they choose. And if they choose, here's your one.
I don't know, there, sometimes with the, especially with, with energy efficiency grants, there's some pretty technical information you need to provide in terms of, you know, how much, you know, what are you gaining in efficiency and all this other stuff, and it could be pretty involved.
I appreciate the dialogue tonight. However, a leader has to stand up, and that's me tonight, very passionate. I have an office manager who goes into an office with no windows, and it's eighty degrees last week. I started this in December.
Right.
We're, we're very uncomfortable in this room. You can imagine the two ladies that work hard every day, uncomfortable.
Yeah, I'm not saying that I want it to get done.
I, I'm not relying as a leader on, as you said, maybe a grant that could be open for a year. We're looking at funds that are just designated for infrastructure. This is important. I can't go back to, to staff and say, hey, we're gonna explore another avenue. Like, they need a leader that gets it done, and I'm here.
No, well, I can tell you, I mean, we're, we're gonna ask the ARPA question, you know, the, but, um, again, my concern is that, is that the townspeople are gonna get, um, quite frankly, oversold the grant, because I think it's extremely unlikely that, um, that we would secure grant funds in time to do the HVAC work for this, for this fall. I mean, virtually impossible. It just doesn't work that way.
Which I remind you, the numbers we were getting were good for seven days. If, if anyone's in the business world, some were good for thirty, some were good for seven days, as the quote.
So, and if, if some, if the grant, if the, if the possibility of a grant changes people's thinking on approving the ARPA fund question, then the likely end result of that is we're gonna spend money out of the capital fund, um, because the work is gonna have to be done, because the grant's just not gonna be there in time.
So I, I think it's a great idea to do, to do both. I think you're absolutely, absolutely right. We do both, we have them running and.
If it gets here in time, that'd be great.
Right.
I'm happy to accept the challenge.
Okay.
Prove me wrong.
As a other statement, I think, you know, why we're asking for, like, the five hundred instead of the three fifty, I think that builds in the cushion. I think it goes back in. If it didn't go back in, and it went to another fund, I, I, I share the concern. But where this is building a cushion for prices going up, for something having to change, the work is important. And, you know, I had talked myself, I think, out of my original motion and back into, you know, it needs to get done, and.
No, I agree.
And now's the time to do it, and so I think, you know.
So any more questions from the Budget Committee related to the, um, the warrant articles for, I'm gonna give Jill a chance. I'll come back to you, I promise. Jill, go ahead.
The phone internet monthly fee, is that equipment rental, or is that internet service?
It's, it's both, I think. What he told us is that, like your cable box, the rental of the box is part of the monthly fee.
I didn't read all eighty-five pages, so you guys are more knowledgeable here, but my understanding was if taxes have already been appropriated, then ARPA money cannot be added or spent on that. So I don't, I'm concerned that we can't have the monthly fee in the ARPA amount.
Well, it's, it's a new monthly fee, that's the issue.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not.
It's an unbudgeted, it's currently unbudgeted fee. It would have to be budgeted in the future, and we wouldn't be able to use ARPA funds for that, like, probably next year.
So that's kind of the.
Yeah, which is why the twenty-five hundred figure, so it's only for the rest of the year.
Okay, so it's, even though it's an increase of a current fee that we have.
We're getting on the service, though. It's not, it's not. We're getting on the service, though, it's not, it's not a fee, it's a completely different service, you're changing out everything in the town from its, um, its, its speeds, its modems, its phones, it's, it's a completely different service than what we currently have.
And then currently in that same category, um, when we were having in the budget discussions, the whole reason for George's increased hours, he specifically said he's doing GIS mapping for the town.
He, no, no, he's, he's using GIS for some of the, GIS information for some of the projects he's doing, like, like representing, uh, resource protection zones and things of that sort, but he's not doing GIS mapping of individual property lots, so.
Okay.
His system is not user-friendly, isn't based on the GIS system, and there's no interface.
Yeah.
No, I just, I'm just asking the semantic question, because I don't want us to get.
Alan had a, has his hand.
Well, we have, we, being a Budget Committee, well, we have a detailed summary of the votes tonight before our meeting.
Detailed summary of our votes?
Yes.
Well, you, yeah, which is a copy of the warrant article, basically, it's, yep, you should have this with amounts for, because that's, that's what you're, that's what you're, you're, basically, you're, these will say, the, the text that's not here right now is the select board recommends yes, Budget Committee recommends, and you guys will decide yes or no. Uh, Heather, back to you, did you have another one?
She, she brought up the point about George and the mapping.
Okay.
Um, and then I don't wanna talk about it tonight, I sent an email today in response to, um, my request for the capital funds, and I, I just have questions about the process of how the accounting works, not, I'm, I'm not questioning any of the accounting. I just, as a Budget Committee member, I would like to have a better understanding of how, like, with the flag account conversation, you know, I would just like to have a better understanding of how the town accounts work versus, um, like, the, the, the numbers that I bought today from Jess about the balances and the accounts.
Then you can put the responsibility on me specifically.
Okay.
And the reason why you got what you got was because I asked for the accounts that we have, and that's all I could pull out at this point. In talking with the chair, he said, no, there's some more accounts. I don't know where they are, because I don't know the Trio system.
Okay.
Never helped, had to do the Trio system, so what you've heard tonight is probably in-depth greater than what I'm gonna be able to provide you on Monday night, but I'll be there and you can ask the best questions that you've got. I'm a proponent.
Yeah, and my, and my questions for Monday, I don't, that, that's more of like a better understanding as a, as of a whole of how it works.
And, and I saw the fact that, and realized that you probably understood that any of our reserve funds, uh, that we already have can't be duplicated by spending ARPA funds.
Right, yeah, no, that, I wasn't trying to.
That's why I did get in, so, and that kind of question is more of a budget issue in the budget preparation process going in for the twenty-three budget.
Yeah, so, so I'm gonna actually rein that one in a bit, and, um, if there's nothing more specific to the articles, um, that you guys are gonna be talking about on Monday, then I'm gonna move us along on the agenda. Okay, thank you, uh, for the Budget Committee members that came tonight, um, appreciate that. Okay, we're on to the third item in the whole business, the, uh, formal tan authorization vote.
All right, I'm preparing in advance, should we need it, and we're still doing the cash flows, and I'm working with the attorney, Verzine Insure, but they wanted a more formal response and vote on the tan, and that's what you've gotten in each location for a signature, vote and signature.
Where, where is that?
Well, I put it in front of all of you.
I don't think so.
You have, I mean, you had it in the folder, you pulled it out a couple times.
Yeah, I'm gonna.
Oh, I think you just had it, I think I just saw it. No, no, go back, go back.
That's, no, that's probably works, yeah. Very specific language.
I thought we already authorized you to take.
I thought we did too.
That's why I don't understand what we're, that was already authorized.
But the attorney then sent language that she wants specifically acted on. And this is signature on it or something?
As required by bond counsel for authorization to obtain a tax anticipation. So voted, uh, okay, that under and pursuant to Title Thirty A, Section Five, Seven, Seven, One of the main and by statutes, as amended, supplemented, there be and hereby is authorized the issuance of a, they're looking for a doll, we have to fill out a dollar amount?
What, up to one point five is what I'm looking at, and we're gonna work back from there based on the cash flow analysis that's being conducted.
Do you want me to write that in?
Yes, up to.
Well, it just doesn't say up to.
No, it doesn't, but I don't wanna undercut, and if we can get down to a million, that's where I wanna be. That way you'll have that cushion going through. You didn't borrow money last year, and it made it very tight.
Are you sure we didn't? I thought we did.
In nine, in twenty, you did.
We did two years ago. I don't think we did.
Nineteen, twenty-one.
That sounds right.
We cut it close.
It's because we had bond leftover. So entertain a motion to authorize the town manager to seek a tax anticipation note for an amount up to one point five million dollars in principal.
So moved.
Joe, second, uh, any discussion, all in favor?
Not that we already haven't had.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
No, no, I got the stack.
Present a new leaf, start a discussion, was that tonight?
We had that already.
We did, the new leaf, we did, BYOB, uh, this is an application for a, a BYOB permit for a wedding reception on September tenth. Entertain a motion for three P M. to twelve A M.
That's a good one, that's a good party right there. I didn't get my invite yet, so I can't approve it.
We won't read the names.
Second, second.
Who made the motion?
Or, or, I'll, um, so moved.
So moved, is there a second?
I'll, I'll second.
All right, uh, all in favor of approving the, um, permit? All live zero, okay. Would entertain a motion, uh, to appoint, oh, we don't have, oh, yeah, appoint Emily Alexander, uh, to the Durham Historic District Commission.
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Todd seconds, any discussion, all in favor, okay? We have, uh, oh, I think we have two others here to sign as well. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Josh second, we're gonna give Josh on that one, um, all in favor? Is everybody in favor of approving the consent, oh, yeah, five oh, okay. All right, okay, upcoming meetings, um, usually you guys put the dates in there, you gotta make me do it in my.
August first for the Budget Committee?
Yeah, yeah, so the Budget Committee's meeting August first.
Or the ninth and.
Uh, special town.
Ninth special is the sixteenth.
Yeah, regular select board meeting, Tuesday, August ninth, six thirty, uh, special town meeting, August sixteenth, I believe that's at six, not six thirty, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, so that's at the Eureka Center. And that would get us in August. I am, like I said, I'm on vacation next week, so I won't be, I won't be attending the Budget Committee's meeting, but.
You've been on vacation.
I would've, uh, I just remembered it's my wife's birthday.
I'm jealous.
All right, so, um, do we, okay, I'm gonna move, uh, now then, that we enter into executive session pursuant to one MRSA four, five, six A for discussion of personnel matters related to the town manager search.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All right.
Who seconded?
Thank you. All right, we are executive session.
Sign for the BYOB.